Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Henry Ford College, November 18th, 2019. Board calls to order. Roll call, please.
Usain Barry.
Here.
Mary Lane is here. Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Here.
Adel Moser.
Here.
James Thorpe, absent. Chair Pachalkov.
Here. Next, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Henry Ford College Board of Trustees minutes. Audit Committee Special Meeting, October 21st, 2019. Finance Committee Special Meeting, October 21st, 2019. Policy Committee Special Meeting, 21st, 2019. Regular Meeting, October 21st, 2019. So moved?
Support.
Recommended action?
Wait. You gotta read the action.
Corrections and move to approve these minutes.
Okay, we have a support and a second?
Yes, support.
All right. Are there any additions, corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Please attach a unanimous roll. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Madam Chair, Hadiene Abdul Aziz Al Madani. Was it close? Okay, so I have a name-
He just has to pick up his pace.
Yeah. I have a name that's hard to pronounce, so I know what it's like to have someone mess your name up, and I'm sorry I started that way. Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you repeat your name, please?
It's Hadiene Abdul Aziz Al Madani. Ooh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you President Cavallona, Chair Pachalkov, and members of the board. My name is Hadiene Abdul Aziz Al Madani. I graduated from Edsel Ford High School and began attending Henry Ford College in the fall of 2017. My major is pre-nursing, and I hope to get into the Henry Ford nursing program. I am involved in multiple clubs on the campus. One, I am the Vice President of the Arab Student Union and a member of the Yemen Student Association. I am a member for the Inside Track on campus and mentor, and I'm also a mentor at Edsel Ford High School for students who are preparing for college. Now, I am pleased to read this month's HFC Board acknowledgements. Congratulations to Salam Jumjum. Salam was the recipient of the Zeal Credit Union Nursing Educational Award presented at the October 2019 Michigan Nursing Summit. The HFC Paramedic Program received a three-year approval from the State of Michigan Trauma Bureau. Inspection with no citation. Congratulations to Program Director Shannon Brewley and her team for all their hard work. Congratulations to Dr. Brian Kirchner, Geology Faculty Member, on being awarded Michigan's Science Center Volunteer of the Month for December 2019. Congratulations to the student for their paramedic nursing and pre-educational programs. The student participated in the HFC's trunk or treat hosted by the Support Staff Association on October 26th. The team's ambulance took the third place for the best trunk. Congratulations to three HFC volleyball players who recently earned Michigan Community College Athletic Association Eastern Conference honors. All three Lady Hawks were named Second Team All-Conference. The honorees are sophomore Haley Doran, sophomore Olivia Grantham, and freshman Monica Sampson. Thank you for the opportunity to be this month's reader. Are there any questions I could ask or answer for you guys?
Thank you, and I'll guarantee you there's a question.
Pretty sure.
And he won't ask you your name again.
Hopefully.
So, Ms. Al Madani?
Correct.
What year? You're in your second year now?
Uh, third.
Okay. And do you plan to graduate?
Yes.
Right answer. That's the right answer. I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions about you because I want the board to be able to have an understanding of your background, but before you do, I understand you brought a couple support teammates here with you?
Always needed.
Yes, always needed. Why don't you go ahead and introduce your colleagues?
I brought Bihar.
Go ahead, stand up, Bihar.
She's done this before.
Yes, she has.
And then I brought Othman as well, and there are two people that are always there, and they're like my backbone.
Yeah, that's, yes. That's the reason why I wanted you to identify them because it shows you have good judgment in your supporters.
I hope so.
And I see you all together a lot, and I can tell they're good friends of yours, and I hope that it's emblematic of the kind of support you have from your colleagues at the campus, but also from the staff here.
Yes.
So, you're someone that's particularly interesting to me, and I know my colleagues here on the board because you came from Edsel Ford High School-
Correct.
-which is a school here in the Dearborn Public School System. How did, and I'm putting you on the spot, you and I haven't talked about this, have we? I haven't told you any of my questions?
No.
Okay. So, how do you feel Edsel Ford and Dearborn Public Schools got you prepared for college?
Um, honestly, I only attended Edsel for senior year.
Okay. Where were you before that?
I went to MGLVA, and then I, before that, I went to Riverside.
Okay.
But overall, I think that the Dearborn Public Schools are very focused on their students doing their very best, and although the environment could have been better, I feel like the teachers were on their students, wanted them to learn, wanted them to benefit, and stuff like that, and they had after-school programs. They would sit with you one-on-one and have you understand whatever it may be that you're having difficulties with, whether it's schoolwork or personal problems, so I could say they did a good job in that.
Okay. You know, I'm impressed by, if you were only at Edsel Ford for a year, I'm impressed by your devotion to the school. You're back there, serving as a mentor there and also here at the college. How has Henry Ford College been for you? What is working well? What could we improve on for someone like you?
Um, Henry Ford College? Honestly, I love Henry Ford College. It's, I do, and I'm already thinking about, like, obviously when I'm gonna transfer, and it's kinda like saddened to me because I've made a family here, and I've gotten used to the campus, used to the staff. Not only are the staff staffs, but they're more like family. There are people who you could go to and not feel like, oh, that person might judge me, or I'm afraid to do so, but you are like, you make friends with the staff here as well, and they open up to you for no matter what, and I feel like everybody needs that no matter where they are, and I feel like Henry Ford provides that. The professors are great. The teaching is good. The campus is safe. About it, security is always there for whoever, you know, whatever it may be, even to walk you anywhere or just to talk with you. I feel like HFC provides things that other universities don't have, and it's small, but it does great work.
Is there anything in your experience that we can improve on? And that's okay, to be candid. Let's be clear. You and I haven't talked about this, right? About anything?
That sounds good.
So, it's fair for you to tell us. Is there things that we need to work on?
Um, I've attended the safety meeting. You guys mentioned that the security might be armed, like start having armed forces?
Yeah, what are your thoughts of that?
I'm totally against it.
Okay.
Why? Because I'm a person who fears weapon like that, and I don't wanna like, like I said, I'm very close with the staff, very close with the securities and people like that, and I don't wanna feel like, okay, I see that on them and I'm afraid of guns physically. So, like, I feel like a lot of students would start, like, backing away from them, like not try to have interaction with them and stuff, and get scared more. I don't know. I just feel like it's a scary thing.
This is a sensitive question, but I'm just interested. You seem to have the guts to talk publicly about the way you feel, and I appreciate that. What do you think about this campus's diversity and how it treats people of different backgrounds and religions and ethnicities?
Um, I love this campus. It's very diverse, especially since it's in Dearborn, like in the middle of Dearborn. It's very diverse, and the Arabic Student Union Club, that's what it's all about. It's bringing in diversity altogether, whether, no matter where you're from, we bring each other close together. So, whether you're Arab, Catholic, Christian, Jew, atheist, whatever it may be, we're all one, and we have a lot of members that are, come from different backgrounds, different beliefs and cultures and stuff, and honestly, I could say that we opened up to each other more. We got to know each other's ideas, and we became a family, and we kinda clicked really quickly. So, it's good not to just be friends with just Arab, 'cause I'm Arab, 'cause they know me more, or just 'cause you believe in this certain thing. To be friends, it's better if we open and understand people more, and I feel like that's really good, and, like I said, the Arabic Student Union, that's where I met these two.
Can I just say that you're exemplifying what a college campus is supposed to do? That's the whole point of a college experience, is for you to be exposed to the variety of community members, not just being insulated-
Yeah.
...in one conversation. And so, you are expressing what we would hope that any college campus would be able to produce, is an environment where all types of individuals from all types of backgrounds are interacting and exchanging ideas and improving themselves and their fellow human beings into promoting awareness of each other. So, I appreciate hearing that.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Al Madani?
Mm-hmm.
What do you wanna do when you grow up?
Um, I wanna get into the nursing program, but I don't wanna stop there. I wanna be a gynecologist, as weird as that might sound, but yeah, I wanna be a gynecologist. So, I hope after I get my nursing degree and stuff, like, I start making my way up there. So, just in case anything does happen in the future, I still have my nursing degree, but I do wanna make it up there.
Well, some of the other board members may have questions in addition to what the chair had, but from the president's office and everyone that works here, we're proud of you and we're glad you had the guts to talk tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
I just wanna add one thing. Having aspirations to be a gynecologist, I think that's very noble, and it's something that you should be proud of, because a woman, when they go to a gynecologist, they need to have someone that they're comfortable with and that they feel understands them. So, always say that with pride.
I've researched, and I've seen that some people are very difficult, and I wanna be like, when I come down, I wanna make sure you feel like you're loved.
Absolutely, and that will make all the difference in your patients. So, thank you. Trustee Barry?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, both under birds, and thank you very much for your honesty. Oh, I was just looking around the table. Everybody was paying attention to every word you were saying, so really, really appreciate it.
And there's a couple of people up here who are parents of Edsel Ford graduates, so both my daughters went there and Trustee Lane's children went there as well. Oh, yeah, that's right. Yours as well. Well, I was always thinking about the Career Center as well, so, yeah. So, there's many graduates being represented tonight. All right, thank you so much. Next item, please.
President's items.
Thank you, Trustee Lane and Madam Chair. I will try to be brief because I am sharing my time in a few minutes with one of my favorite colleagues who is a performer, and I don't wanna have to follow him. It's always bad to follow a great performer. So, let me make my brief comments. The first is something of an exciting and relieving announcement. I hope you all know and can see how proud I am to have my colleague be Dr. Michael Nealan, and-
They don't have to stay if they don't want to.
Oh, look at that. Trustee Mead has given you-
Permission to leave.
Permission to leave in the front row, unless you wanna see the most wonderful board in the history of the planet.
They don't call it a board meeting for nothing.
Oh, man. Man.
We're still funny.
We try, yeah, we try to be funny.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you being here, and of course, if you do have to go study, that would be completely acceptable.
Please, thank you.
You can see why Trustee Mead was one of the best-
And then it cleared the way for Dr. Michael Nealan.
Yes, yes. Trustee Mead was Vice President of Student Affairs, so that was him still applying his excellence in that. So, I was about to say that you may have forgotten how he looks, but you certainly haven't forgotten his hard work, because he's worked some of the time while he was gone, but Dr. Michael Nealan, I'm not gonna ask you to stand because you've had a rough time with the convalescence of your back, but we're so happy to have you back. You're a really valued member of our team. You showed what a great leader you were and are by how well your team performed in your absence. You have four deans who, and frankly, other directors and faculty members who supported you in your absence. We were hopeful it would be two weeks while you were gone, and I think we were clocking it six weeks, but you're one of our valued team members. I speak for all the members of this board. We trust and appreciate your leadership, and we're so happy to have you back.
Thank you all very much.
Just in time for Christmas.
Well, Madam Chair, just in time for the Higher Learning Commission.
He just can't get off of that topic.
Well, I just wanna say that we're right in the middle of the Higher Learning Commission's visit to our campus. We are doing two things here. We're trying to put our best foot forward to show what we're proud of and what we have strengths on, but also asking for guidance and support from the visiting team to help us acknowledge where we can grow and how we can learn from best practices. And I just want to report out one thing that I'm quite proud of. In the beginning of this meeting, the visiting team interacted with the cabinet, and of course, the thing that they come to our campus having read is called the assurance argument, and that is something that the board has seen and hopefully many of the colleagues that I have here at the college have seen, and multiple members of the visiting team commented that this assurance argument was either one of the best they had ever seen or the best they had ever seen. And so that you're aware, this is a document that is generally between 150 and 200 pages with multiple links to associated evidence supporting the statements about our college, and it really is the product of two people. And I'm gonna ask these people to stand after I say their names, but before I say their names, I'm gonna tell you that they worked their butt off. They're valuable members. One is a faculty member and one is a vice president. They worked together as a team. They had to endure me proofreading their work. They got the best of Henry Ford College down in less than 4,000 words, Betsy? Forty-five thousand words? Forty thousand. And they also said, here's where some things we're, you know, we're working on, and I think that's why the visiting team commended that document. Now, they're visiting with us, the visiting crew, and we're looking forward to learning more about what they have as the outbrief, and I'm proud that tomorrow at the outbrief we'll be including the envelope of people who hear that first message of our outbriefing from the visiting team, and I'm proud that the chair and the vice chair will be joining the union presidents and the cabinet with me tomorrow. But I already know one thing they're going to say positive, and that is our assurance argument was well-done, thoughtful, and shows how great we are in taking this seriously as an opportunity to learn. So, please join me in saying thank you to two people, and please stand. And you're by yourself tonight because Dr. Gonco actually had to attend a meeting associated with the loss in her family. So, Betsy, you can take the credit for both of you.
The bow for everything.
But Betsy Cohn, thank you very much.
We could do one of those too.
So, on to quicker things that I won't go on about. There was a turkey trot on our campus last weekend. I think it was Saturday. We had students and faculty and myself and my wife and kids come, and there was a mile run that all four of the Cavallona family did. I'd say we ran about 20% of it. And we didn't really win much there, but we, then I ran the 5K with about 30 other people, I think, and that was a great event. It was also a food drive for the Black Male and Queens Focus Group and the Hawks Nest that the Cavallona clan was happy to provide some nutritional support to those institutions. Following that event, I was proud to go see the team at the Welcome Center, putting on their first Super Saturday of this enrollment period, and while I got there late because of the turkey trot, I didn't know it wasn't 'cause I was running too slow, although I was running too slow. The team there was, I walked around and talked to the people enrolling, and I could see that they were feeling welcome and excited and well-served by the Welcome Center. We've got some of the people here who were instrumental in that. Holly Diamond is here. Dr. Herbst is here. Patty Flogus, who supports Dr. Herbst. I couldn't name everyone, but I do want the people to know who I saw that day, that I appreciate you making the time on Saturday. It was something that I was proud of, and I know we're gonna keep doing those types of things. Monday after that, we had several Events for Veterans Day, and that was a great event for us on campus. I attended the event at the Dearborn Performing Arts Center that was put on by the city, and then I attended an event here put on by Cassandra Flucker and Gail Bach, who help our students who are from VA families. We fed them lunch. We talked with students and staff, and I was happy to, Kathy Edwards made some really, really good cake that I had too many pieces of, and we're doing great things for our veteran population here, and I'm proud of that team. We also had a trunk or treat that, is Leslie Winless here? I don't know if I saw her. Is Leslie here? Yeah, Leslie, stand up.
She's hiding.
Stand up, Leslie. Leslie put on trunk or treat like she does every year. I couldn't make it because I was out of town, but if you haven't been to this event, it's a fantastic event that Leslie organizes with her colleagues, where the general public is invited, as well as Henry Ford College staff and faculty, to have a safe place to trick or treat in our parking lots here where people decorate their trunks. Leslie, what did you go as this year?
Mario Kart.
Mario Kart. And I regret that I couldn't make it, Leslie, but I saw the pictures and I really appreciate everything you do there. So, without, I'm gonna talk about finances next, but without any further ado, I will invite my colleague, Kevin Dewey, whose real name is Garth, and I'm happy to have him here to present to you all about some announcements he'd like for you all to help him move throughout the Dearborn community.
Thank you, President, Chair, Vice Chair, and board members and audience. I appreciate having a minute of your time today. I promise to keep it under 40,000 words.
I have the gamble, just remember.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, no, if you've ever seen, my name is G. Kevin Dewey. It's Garth Kevin Dewey, a name I love very much. Anyway, I come here every December with a group that performs a couple of holiday musical selections for you and reports to you how we just performed a whole bunch of great concerts. So, I thought maybe I would try to get a minute of your time to let you know before those concerts occur. And in the packet of materials I put into your envelope, there's a couple of flyers of the student concerts coming up tomorrow night, the Autumn Choral Concert, and a week from Monday, the Winter Jazz Concert, so you can come and hear these groups. There's free tickets if you happen to be available, wanna come. If you need more than the tickets I gave you there, just shoot me an email, and I'll be glad to help you out with more tickets. If the whole family wants to come, Russ, then we'll take good care of them. But anyway, also in your packets, and for anybody else that's here, we have our concert calendar put together by Patty Sekalitis and our wonderful staff in graphic design, graphic arts. So, I'll leave some extras over on the table. This shows most of our public concerts throughout the whole school year, and would love to see you at any concerts. If you ever need tickets, let me know. I'm glad to help you out. I think there's a complimentary collage CD for each of you as well in your packets, and a couple of other things about our music program. But after these two concerts I just mentioned, we also have The Big Band and Blue Fusion performing with Karen Newman on her annual Holiday Extravaganza on Friday, March 13, or March, Friday, March 13. Get your tickets now. December 13. And also, those of you who remember the Borset Festival from Cherry Hill Presbyterian Church, Vanguard Voices and Orchestra are performing the music from that twice. It's all on your calendar there. And then Lessons and Carols is a beautiful, for those who wanna get in the Christmas spirit, that's a beautiful concert to come to on Sunday, December 22nd.
22nd.
Yeah, 22nd, yeah, thanks, thanks. So, very, very active program. I will be seeing you again in December. All but one of these concerts will have occurred by then. So, hope to see you at some, hope to see you at some. Any questions about the music program or our concerts?
No, and thank you for the CD.
Sure thing. Thanks again for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Michael, can I go now?
Yes, Dr. Mead.
Yes, yes, you're excused, but I'm very happy that you have pro bono omnium-
Yes.
...on this so we can practice.
That's right. You can practice, so you can sing along when we do the school song.
Otherwise, I'm gonna-
Here, everybody, join in. Pro bono omnium. Chris Shabino's at the Good of All. Oh, I hadn't thought about it that way. Yeah, there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey.
Thank you, and good night.
Trustees, the last several things I have in your packet are the things you've become accustomed to. One is the cash forecast, which is the rainbow sheet. You will see that there's a couple places where there is red for the available working capital. Remember that that is, anytime we forecast that the working capital is any place below $1.5 million. The places where that is seen in what we're looking at in May of 2020, and then again in June of 2020, are not problematic because you'll see right around those events, they are investments that will become mature, and with a maturity column there, which is another word of saying we'll have a cash influx from them. So, those are, you see a little more red than we usually do, but rest assured that is not cause for alarm. You can see, moving on to the budget report that reports out to you what the budget looks like at the end of October, which is four months in to the fiscal year, that our budget is in the black for this year at the end of October. We have more revenue than we expected because of increased enrollment. We have less expenditures that you can see are broken out in this sheet. That is all I'll say about the budget, unless there's any questions on that. The last thing I'll say is that your agenda here involves several recommendations from the HR department about hiring, and several of them are here today. If the board is, does eventually move on those, then I would ask the chair to let me introduce some of those folks later in the meeting.
Absolutely, so stay tuned.
And that is all I have for my items today. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Well, I thought this was the performance by Dr. John Setkowski, as referenced earlier when you said you didn't want to be in front of a performance. He was gonna be singing. This is the Fall 2019 Proposed Tia F Project Board Report, 204531, Vice President Setkowski.
The committee meets twice during the year, fall and then in March. Tonight, we have five proposals that we wanna bring forward. These are funded by a special account that deals with the funds of a separate committee and that, so I will turn it over to Kevin Dewey.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bob James. I'm the, one of the members of the TIF Committee, and we hope that you will consider funding the four projects that we have moved up into your hands. We met October 4th. We had in the neighborhood of about $300 and some odd thousand dollars to, for funding, and these are the four projects that we'd like to move forward. The first one is classroom equipment, the classroom equipment in E240. We're working on equipment in that room that's nearly 30 years old, and it's time to start replacing some of it. Some of it they can get fixed, some of it they can't find parts for. Same thing with the second one for $10,956. Again, classroom equipment that we're in desperate need of. The next one has to do with a partial funding of the 21st Century Newsroom. Since the TIF Committee only funds the technology, the part of the project that is here is the technology and the furniture that's needed to house the technology. The original request was, had quite a bit more furniture, but the TIF Committee doesn't fund that type of equipment. And then the last one is a proposal to upgrade the computers in the counseling area. Those are, my understanding, were close to 10 years old and time to replace them.
Are there any questions?
Any questions.
Okay, we'll start with Trustee Barry and work our way down.
When will the, next time the committee meet?
We meet after strategic planning is completed, so usually right around the 1st of March.
It's March.
Yeah, somewhere the 1st to the 15th of March, and we fund things that look like, that have been approved at the vice president level and are for, like, next fiscal year, so we can pull those items forward if we don't have any current projects that are available.
'Cause I'm seeing here, after these four projects are funded, there still remains over- 'Cause I'm seeing here, after these four projects are funded, there still remains over half a million dollars in the...
Yeah.
Yeah, is that, is that normal for it to be that high?
Well, in some years it is, in some years it's not. I can remember probably about three years ago, I think we had an egg that was being funded. I'm sure you all remember that one. And the Animaage Table. Those are absolutely fantastic projects that the TIFF Committee took on, and we had to scale down some of the projects because we didn't have enough money. It just so happens that we do have some funding, we'll have more in the winter term, and I tell everybody that will listen to put in projects that are needed. When Adam Cutier was here, he really took on some of the projects that we didn't have before, funding a replacement of computers in classrooms. So, I've been trying to find places where we can upgrade computers in classrooms so that we can keep from having 10-year-old equipment in the classrooms. And so, I'm trying to tell everybody, get these projects in, get them in the strategic plan so that we can fund them through TIFF.
Sure, sure, 'cause I remember a few years ago, the discussion was, if we're collecting these fees from the students,
Yep.
let's put them out there right now, those students could take advantage of...
And the infrastructure also gets a portion of it that goes directly to the IT infrastructure, and they certainly have enough things in-house to fund with that monies.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee McDonald?
That was my question as well. If we're getting, taking money from students now in the form of fees, I wanna make sure that they're getting...
Some benefit.
Some benefit from their charges. But I also have a, I mean, give me a synopsis of what the 21st Century Newsroom is, if collaborative.
Okay, so, their original funding had an area over there in the, where they currently are now with the newspaper, but they wanted to completely reconstruct that area to have collaborative tables. They wanted to bring technology in, such as smart boards and TVs and more computers. Unfortunately, TIFF doesn't do a lot of the funding for the chairs and tables and stuff like that, so that was their main thrust. What the TIFF Committee did approve to move forward are the smart boards and the TVs and the collaborative technology that they can use to build their product.
Thank you. Okay, trustee Moses?
So, in the same token, if the TIFF project is not funding it, who's funding the furniture?